Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting of January 10th. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed on SMC's website. I'd like to thank Liz Poplowski, who's helping with our meeting this evening. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening. However, if anybody wishes to do so in the future, please contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. Next is chairperson and members' report. Anything? Nothing? Great. Next is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Certainly want to wish everyone a happy new year for 2024. We've started the year with a lot of precipitation, as everyone knows. We had our first snowstorm, which fortunately did not cost us a day out of school, but it was a substantial storm over the weekend that resulted in a two-hour delayed opening on Monday. I do want to thank, and then followed by over two and a half inches of rain last evening, on top of that snow, with a little snow at the beginning. Our Department of Public Works, both the Highway Division as well as the Public Buildings Division, those crews have done an outstanding job, just working really hard to get things in shape, whether that was obviously plowing the roads, but taking care of snow removal on school campuses, making sure that all the entrances were cleared and everything was ready to go as soon as possible for a delayed opening on Monday. And then, as you might imagine, there were a variety of, nothing terrible thankfully, but a variety of leaks all around the school district today, just with the snow on the roofs and the amount of rain we received in our public buildings. Our custodians who work under the Public Buildings Department and our maintenance craftsmen did an outstanding job, just really being as responsive as possible. I know Mr. Girardi kept me updated, and I really appreciate the collaborative relationship we have with those town departments. And over the course of what may turn out to be a long winter, we need their support so we can be in school, open and as often as we possibly can to benefit students' learning. That's my perspective, and it may not be the perspective of all the students in the audience, but that's the way it'll be. We have the school whenever we can. And so, thank you to those town departments, and that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. First on the agenda tonight is recognition. It's our Shrewsbury High School Crew Team, recognition of a state championship. A successful season for our Shrewsbury High School Crew Team culminated with seven state championship titles and a first-ever four-teams point-score trophy for the boys' four-team at the 2023 Massachusetts Public Schools Rowing Association Fall Championship. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Costa, Athletic Director.
Well, thank you very much for having us. Another special occasion for our athletic program, especially for our crew program. It's been a long, four years or five years since we won the last one. Just kidding there, but the hard work and dedication of the program. I want to definitely acknowledge our Director of Rowing and Head Girls Coach Mitch McManus and our Boys Head Coach Beatrice Sims and our Assistant Coach MJ Lutowski. Sorry. I always fumble that. But and then the captains in the crew program, they've worked tirelessly, not only just in the boats and working on the waters and being successful in the crew, but updating our fleet, fundraising for the program, just putting in enormous amount of hours above and beyond, I think, even some of our other programs in the school. And what was special about this for them is the fact that they were able to finish the season the best in the state. So we'd like to, at this time, introduce our Director of Rowing and Head Girls Coach Mitch McManus, who would like to explain the process of how this came about.
Thank you, Jay. Good evening, Dr. Sawyer and committee members. Before you, we have our eight captains, our four girls captains. Nikki has just been, not only has she won the MVP award for girls' crew in the fall, but she's newly elected captain for the spring, and our three existing captains, Anna, Hannah, and Shelly. And on my left, boys captains, Bodie, Jack, Jimmy, James. So this season is a sort of continuing culmination of a rebuilding of the program. I started with Shrewsbury just over two years ago now. At the time, was coaching both boys and girls. There was a mass exit of coaches. There's still a scarcity of coaches across rowing. I don't know where they've all gone, but they've disappeared. But we're very fortunate to have some terrific caliber coaches in that Beatrice, Coach Beatrice Sims, came to us. She was coaching at Northeastern University, just won the men's IRA in the falls there. We're very lucky to have her come across and take over the boys' team. And joining her coaching, heading up the novice boys' coaching is Coach MJ Lutowski. Unfortunately, this season, we had the opportunity of, again, no coaches, so the options were to scrap the girls' novice program or to do it in two blocks. We're just getting momentum up again. I was loath to scrap the novice program, which is the only one. So we did the girls' back-to-back. So I coached both the girls' novices in the first two-hour block, and then the varsities came down after the second two-hour block, and it turned out kind of good. We had a pretty good season across the board. The Shrewsbury is traditionally an eights program, so there are eight shells, so eight people in a coxswain. This year, we looked at, we inherited an orphaned four-shell that was in the program when I got here. Since I've started, we've now got four four-shells and another on the way. Very kind of donated, a new shell's been donated to us in the spring. And so, we're able to extend the expanse of rowing experience across both fours and eights. And rowing in a four is a very different experience, as the rowers will attest to an eight. And we decided to go in all-in for the fall championships and to attack the fours programs. What resulted, when we were very generously loaned shells by other clubs, we managed to get enough boats to race. And what happened, we made a clean sweep of the novice fours. We won every girls' novice four event, every boys' novice four event, which bodes well for the season coming up. We'd previously done that, so Jimmy and Jack, you guys are in, and James, three members here were in the novice boys' four, who literally trained, I think you got on the boat on the way to the start.
Yeah.
Yeah. We decided just to throw a four in for the spring novice fours two years ago. And they practiced on the way to the start, and they rode very well, and they won the championship. So this is an extension of that. So across both the boys and girls, we have a lot of shells, and we're able to use the fours training. So you might take, so the 1V8, instead of just going out and racing against yourself, you split the boat in two, and you have two boats pushing each other faster and faster. So that's sort of where we're at. I'd like to just pass over to, perhaps the athletes can say a few words. Anna, we'll start with you. We'll go down the line and just recapping the season and highlights and...
Yes, is this the speaker? Okay, sorry. I just wanted to make sure. So this season, it was probably one of my favorites because I was lucky enough, me and Shelly, we got to join what we call lightweight four last year. And this year, we got to reenact that, and that was something I truly enjoyed. It was such like a companionship we brought together. And to be able to see other girls be able to do a four is magnificent because like I love eights, like truly, I love rowing in an eight. But rowing in a four is totally different. You feel more sound, more relaxed. It's amazing. Like I will never give up. Like I can totally say this. I plan to, when I'm like 50 years old, to own a single and row down the river. Like it is a dream of mine. Like I'm not giving this up.
This season was one of my favorite seasons as well. Despite Mitch having to coach two practices back-to-back, which I get is really tiring, he managed to pull it off, and we had a really successful season. And I'd like to thank Coach for that. And yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, I agree with Hannah. I think that Mitch did a really good job this year. And I think we showed our sentiments to that at our banquet. But it's just, it's really inspiring to be able to see all the underclassmen girls come up with these boats and row their hardest, and it's really exciting to see. Our novice girls actually had a really great time this season. Their second time on the water, they got a gold, and it's just really inspiring to be able to build these girls up from nothing and see them succeed. So it's exciting.
Just so to interrupt, a quick story, an anecdote of the second novice four, girls' novice four. They rode together. We finalized the crew the week before the regatta. They went out, they were fired up. We had a race plan where they would row a certain rate, and the rate cap was 28 strokes a minute. And we had a plan. It was like, okay, stick to this, guys, because this is where we're going to be. They came under the bridge. This is a three-mile race. They came under the bridge for the last mile and a half race. I clocked them at 36 strokes a minute, which is a lot faster than we'd agreed on. But they won the race by over two minutes. So we let it slide. And I'm very excited to see the novice girls continue that progression into the spring season when we get into the short-course 2,000-meter races, where it's gun goes, bang, sprint, let's get to the race, get to the finish line first. Very excited at the season coming up.
We had a similar story with our novice boat, not about what Mitch was talking about, but what Shelly was talking about. We had a very successful novice four throughout the entire season that won every single race they participated in, just first every single week, like week in, week out. MJ's laughing because it was his. Every week, he would go out, he would practice with these guys, whether it was one day a week, or two, or three, he'd go out and they'd kill it every week. And so, seeing that success spread to the entire team by the end of it, with all of us going into fours, and some of us hadn't practiced in fours much before that final race, we all killed it. So that was really cool to see.
First off, I'd like to thank all our coaches and stuff who helped make this thing happen. Coach MJ, Coach Beatrice, and Coach Mitch allowed us to train hard, and they just did an excellent job in creating like a new Shrewsbury team, especially what happened years ago. And it's been fantastic, like fantastic ride ever since 2022. I'd also like to thank you for the sponsors who've been able to fundraise our boats and stuff. If it wasn't for them, we would not have been able to row. And I think it was an awesome experience, being captains, working with these guys and girls. It was awesome. We had an excellent season. And also, the rowers on our team, thank you to those, that everyone did hard work. And it was an excellent season, much success, and hopefully, spring will get some more medals and trophies.
I think my favorite thing about the past season, beyond, you know, winning states, is I really think we've created some new traditions to create more of a sense of bonding and unity within the team because when you're on a crew team, you're naturally going to be divided by boat, by varsity versus novice. And I think we've made a lot of good strides of trying to kind of break down those barriers when we can by either try to promote mentorship with the older kids mentoring the novices or trying to promote like good sportsmanship by recognizing those who like have excelled in that level, in that aspect of what being a team member at Shrewsbury High School is. And I'm really excited about some of the new traditions we made and carrying that forward, that sense of unity amongst the team. That's what I'm most excited about.
I'm really proud of the work that all of us have done and the coaching staff with getting the team up to where it is today. As Coach Mitch mentioned, it's been quite a process to rebuild a team from what it was. But all the hard work that all of our past captains and seniors and current people are doing, I feel like we're in a really great spot right now to have a fantastic spring season and continue the legacy and tradition of the team.
Just in a final word, I'd like to throw it to Nikki. So Nikki started as a novice, and she had a spectacular season this year.
I'm still a novice.
So a novice is, you have your novice status in your first 12 calendar months period of rowing. And so, when you're racing in novice events, you're only racing against other athletes who have just started. So there is a sort of a gentle easing into it, so you're not going straight into racing seniors who have been in boats for four years. But Nikki, very humbly, came into the program as a coxswain, had an amazing season. Nikki was a coxswain of the boys' novice four, who went through the season undefeated and won state titles.
Thanks, Jack.
So but all around, I think the, as the athletes have alluded to, it's the crew program is very much a family. Everyone from seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen, they look after each other. And I always keep saying, it's only half about the rowing. We get on the water, we work hard, but so much goes on behind the scenes. There is so much support from the senior athletes to the freshmen and the underclassmen coming in, which as a coach is a joy to see and to witness. And again, I commend you. I couldn't ask for a better group of leaders, and rowing produces leaders. These athletes, seniors, will be put out on the world next year, and they'll take the leadership skills with them and into their college life and their careers beyond that. There are lessons you learn in the boat that just can't be taught anywhere else, and I'm thrilled that this group and all the other athletes, we have nearly, I think, 80 to 90 athletes in the program. All those athletes are learning those same lessons. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Rachel?
I know nothing about crew, other than what you just taught me right there. But I'm really excited to see you in the spring, and I will definitely come watch. But congratulations on a great season. It is very clear that this is a family, just in the way you get so excited, talking about your own love for the sport, but also like remembering what everybody else did. So that's great. Congratulations to both teams.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations on your accomplishments. I'm really impressed with your passion for crew. I love it. It just comes across in how you explain it and similar. I don't know much about crew, but I do know the level of commitment that it takes and the hours that you put into it every day and practice. So appreciate what the students have done, your families for the commitment as well, and the coaches, the amount of time that you put into this and the success that you've achieved is phenomenal. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think sometimes when I, when we sit here, we wonder if we're getting sort of like the shined-up version, right? Like, we see, I mean, wonderful, but I want to tell you a story that tells me how not true this all is. In the fall, you all go around and you knock on doors and you sell stuff so that we can support the boosters. And I'm all for it, and I always buy it. But two young women who are freshmen on your team knocked on our door, and I happen to have my fifth grader standing there. And the effervescence and joy with which this Saturday morning fundraiser, young women brought to, you have no idea how wonderful crew is. It was amazing. It's the best thing ever. We just started. It's wonderful. They were like, and they bounced away, literally. And as I closed the door, not surprisingly, my 10-year-old said, "I want to do crew." And I was like, great. It's a great program, clearly. So I know it's there, and I'm very, very happy for all of you. You deserve all of the accolades that you've gotten and very, very large trophies to root. But I also just want to really appreciate the humility that lots of people really support this program, right? Crew is a particularly expensive program to run, and there are lots of people, and but also all the time, and your parents are driving you around, and all those other people that kind of bring you there, and I appreciate when I hear all of that from all of you, that like, there's a lot of people that, and a coach who's double coaching. I hadn't missed that, that extra footnote here. So thank you to everybody really for making this happen.
Oh, thank you.
I also wanted to just extend my congratulations. And also, I know how much goes into this from your families as well. I know parents provide like double meals, right? Breakfast and lunch, and they're there from like, I know your regattas last all day long, so they're there at like 6:00 in the morning, cooking breakfast for you guys. And so, I just know what a great group effort this all is. And I just want to extend my congratulations to all the athletes, the students, and all the families.
Thank you.
And just to add to that, my son rode crew. He's class of 2010, so a long time ago. But I do remember, you know, it's a tradition in Shrewsbury. I mean, this is, not a lot of public schools have crew teams. And you race against, some of them toward the east, the westerns, the waylands, they come all fancy. And Shrewsbury's always done well. And raising the money to buy these shells or having the donations, like this is something we've had for years, you know. But if it's not for the parents and the coaching, and coaching four hours a day, I mean, that's a significant amount of time for you. So thank you very much. I mean, this is a great program. And for you, Nikki, like you are the boss in the boat with the boys, so. I like that a lot. Yeah, but congratulations. This has always been such a great program. And, you know, to get a state championship against some of these bigger, more well-funded schools is even more meaningful. So congratulations. You represent this school and this town quite well. So thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. It is a wonderful tradition, and we appreciate, want to congratulate you on all your successes. And it's wonderful to be able to recognize you this evening. I have some familiarity because my wife elsewhere rode in high school and also in college, and my oldest daughter rode for the program here in Shrewsbury. And everything that's been said is absolutely accurate. And it is, you know, we're very proud to have a strong athletics program because there are lessons, regardless of what the sport is, that students get in teamwork and leadership and perseverance and all sorts of things that we know our student athletes receive. And there's no question that there are some unique elements to crew that make it particularly special. So again, congratulations on all your successes. We're thrilled for that. Best of luck in the spring season as well. So at this point, if you would, perhaps Nikki, lead the way and come up and shake the committee's hand. And I do have a certificate for each of the captains. And how about a round of applause from the audience?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations on your success. Congratulations on your success.
Shelly.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Bodie. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Very welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations so much.
I'd love to be here.
Congratulations. People think we're here. Coach, congratulations. Absolutely.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Congratulations, Coach.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Which of my children? Have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Arnold.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is an acceptance of a gift. Under our policy 911, gifts of 5,000 or more must be formally accepted by the school committee. And Dr. Sawyer will acknowledge a gift of $10,000 from former Shrewsbury Public Schools Principal, Ms. Jane Wilken. Ms. Wilken is making this gift with the intention of providing up to 1,000 annually to recipients of the award given in her name each year for the purpose of procuring goods or services to enhance the work of that staff member in their school and/or department, beginning with this year's recipient and is subject to approval by Dr. Sawyer. So I'll turn it over to you to discuss it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fritz. And it is a very generous gift by our retired leader, Jane Wilken. And just so folks know, Jane was a, served with distinction in the school district for 29 years as initially a school psychologist and then the special education team chair. She became the assistant director of special education and then moved into a school principal role at Patton School permanently. Although her last year before retirement, she actually, due to some budget cuts, we did not fill the Beale Early Childhood Center position, so she actually was mentored or held in two schools during her final year. The award that was given in her name by me at the opening day for staff each year since 2013 is given annually, and this is the description, to a Shrewsbury Public Schools staff member who exemplifies the qualities of Jane Wilken, who served the district in the ways I just described. And these qualities include setting very high standards for student learning, dedication to creating a professional culture that results in student success, and having the courage to make difficult leadership decisions with the best interests of students as the guiding principle. So we were very fortunate. She had a very, very strong impact on the school district, the students she served over her career. And it was very touching when she reached out to me and indicated that she wanted to make this gift to the school district and give back to the folks who earned this award, her name to it, so that they can use those funds to advance the work that they're doing in some shape or form. She very much wants to empower that person in the district to do that. So ultimately, it could end up being anything from materials for students to professional development opportunities for that individual or their department or school staff members, or anything having to do with advancing the quality of the work that they're doing as a district employee. And the only criteria essentially are whoever's selected for the award and that whatever they'd like to do with it is ultimately approved by me and follow all the usual purchasing. But we will tap into this fund to do that. The recipient of the award this year is Christina Manos. Christina is the Director of English Language Education for the school district. We recognized her on opening day in the fall. When I contacted Ms. Manos, she was extremely pleased with and touched by this, and particularly because she was a parent volunteer and school parent leader at Patton when Jane was the principal there. And Jane actually hired her to start coming back when she started to get back into the workforce to start working as an assistant there. So it's particularly meaningful for Christina. But I want to just thank Ms. Wilken for her generosity. We'll, I know, put the funds to good use and certainly recommend that the school committee vote to accept the gift.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
No.
There being none, I think, you know, again, such another generous gift we've had a lot lately. And when I, you know, I think about who was your recipient this year with Christina Manos and Ms. Wilken, it's two very hard-working individuals who've always gone above and beyond. So it's kind of interesting. That's how this worked out. So if there's no comments or questions, I'll have a motion that the school committee vote to accept a gift of $10,000 from Jane M. Wilken for the purpose of providing up to 1,000 annually to the recipient of the Jane M. Wilken Award that's that school year, for the purpose of procuring goods or services to enhance the work of that staff member in their school and/or department, beginning with the 2023 through 2024 school year recipient, subject to the approval of the superintendent of schools. So moved. Second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So thank you to Ms. Wilken. Okay, next on the agenda is going to be the Elementary School Improvement Plan. Each Massachusetts public school must have a school council consisting of faculty, parents, and a community member who advise the principal on the development of a school improvement plan. This year, each school's school council has used the district's 23 through 27 strategic plan and the district's 23 through 24 strategic goals and action steps to determine which goals were most important to be emphasized across the grade four, K through grade four level, and to develop school-specific goals aligned with a district goal. So I am going to turn it over to all of our elementary school principals, and I'll just have you introduce yourselves for anybody watching from home.
Is one of you going to show the display?
Oh, yeah.
Get those slides up.
Trying to connect right now. I just got the bar that's going.
Spinning wheel of doom.
You know, when I got here, it worked. Now.
Oh, that figures, yes.
Doesn't work. Here we go.
Okay, Plan B.
I can project it if you'd like, if that worked or...
Sure. You trying, Brian?
Why don't I go ahead and project it and then?
That sounds great.
Just let me know.
Uh, here we go. Oh, oh, is that Joe? Look at that. No, we're good. Oh, is that Joe? Well, we can start by introducing ourselves.
We're usually much more efficient.
No, we're not. It's going to get the case out.
I'm Lisa McCubrey. I'm the principal at Floral Street School.
I'm Scalpokay. I'm the principal at Patton School.
Are we doing it in a certain order to?
Yeah, it was a certain order. Good.
I'm Tiffany Ostrider. I'm the principal at Calvin College.
I'm Kristen Gasper. I'm the principal of Beale School.
And Brian Maybe, principal at Spring Street School.
So thanks for having us tonight to share about our goal for the year, or goals for the year. We're going to start by sharing two common goals. So those are goals that we all share across all five elementary schools. And then each principal will speak briefly about a third goal that's unique to that school. And then we will welcome any feedback or questions that you have for us.
Okay, I'm actually the slide right here.
All right.
So thank you for the opportunity to talk about our school improvement plans tonight, specifically our school improvement goals. What you're going to find is that our school improvement goals are anchored in our district commitments and priorities of educational excellence, as will be in for all, and the optimization of resources. In particular, we have established common goals as a elementary community that are founded within our commitment to educational excellence, the specific emphasis on student literacy growth and progress. We had a clear consensus among all five of our school councils that supporting our students' literacy development is a top priority. This is reflected in our investment of time and resources with a focus on our professional learning, data collection, analysis, curriculum implementation, and student achievement, as well as the onboarding of our reading specialists and literacy consultants. goal and commitment, our teachers are learning about word recognition, language, language, excuse me, language comprehension. And we are working on supporting their pedagogy so that we can create skilled readers. But as part of this, we need to be sure that we're also measuring student progress over time. So one action step that we have established is to be sure that we're measuring student progress annually at least three times a year. We have completed that in the fall already. We're in the middle of our second benchmark here, which is considered the winter benchmark. And then we'll do it one more time in the spring. There is a data table that shows you that as we do our progress monitoring, we are coming back to check in on the interventions we establish. And we have created a shared tracking system so that the tracking is happening in cycles across the district so that we can be sure that we are creating student learning goals and student needs and considering those needs across schools. So previously, we had kind of done that in silos in each building, but this has really helped us to expand the opportunity that we have to reach the learners that we're serving by sharing resources across buildings and ensuring our benchmarks are similar. So within the data cycles that I've referenced, we are able to monitor the student's progress, analyze if they're making the achievement and growth that we expect and are supporting them to achieve. And then we can determine together if we need to increase the amount of service being provided, decrease to support continued work toward independence, or maybe adjust to ensure that we have a new goal in place as the student has met their, met their progress. You can see a couple of the pictures from Coolidge School where students are working in either small groups or maybe even potentially one-to-one to continue to work on their literacy growth. And then a key piece that we really wanted to be sure that was embedded into this goal is the importance of communicating with families about their child's literacy supports, their needs, and certainly their successes. So we are creating common tools to do that as well. Brian will share a little bit more with you about how that's looking so far for us this year.
So as Tiffany mentioned, we have a number of practices throughout the course of the year, one being at the beginning of the school year, the grades one to four, that we have students participate in a universal screener to assess their comprehension or reinfluency and some foundational reading skills. At the beginning of the year, in September, our grades one to four, about 41% of the students in grades one to four, excuse me, were requiring literacy support. That could be, that could look like working additional times in the classroom with their teacher, either one-on-one or in a small group, working with our literacy tutor a few times a week, three, four, five times a week in small groups, or for some more intensive needs, working with our reading specialist a few times a week to focus in on the skills that we have identified that students need to learn more about or learn to have better proficiency in those. With our universal screener, we're able to laser in or really focus in on what the students need specifically. And there's a progression of skills that, that kids acquire as they learn how to read. And we can really identify where the kids are strong and where the kids are struggling. So we're able to focus and develop interventions that are really specific to that student's need, which is great. So in September, 41% of our grade one to four students needed some support. Come December, after our, our check-in, we're down to 30% of kids in grades one to four requiring additional literacy support. So on average, that's an 11% decrease in the number of students. Our goal is a 10% decrease, so we're well on our way. And we're really confident that we're gonna exceed the goal of helping our kids to be really proficient readers. On the next slide, you notice I didn't speak about kindergarten. Kindergarten, because of their age and that's just getting acclimated to school, they don't participate in the September, October assessments. We wait until November. And at that time, they're more familiar, excuse me, with their teacher, their classroom, routines. And we feel it's a better time to be able to assess our early learners on where they are as, as readers and some of the support that they might need in, in the classroom. What's different about kindergarten is in grades one to four, sometimes if they're not, if they're working with a literacy tutor or reading specialist, students go out to that specialist or tutor. In kindergarten, the reading tutor or the specialist comes to them so that they're working on those skills as they learn how to read and they're in their classroom environment, they're working with their friends, and it's much more supportive to helping those students to learn the skills that we want them to learn.
So next, we will discuss our school-specific goals. Each goals, each school worked with their school council to identify an area of improvement to support all students and staff. We'll give you a general overview of our building-specific goal and then a few of the highlights of the action steps. I do think it's important, though, that this is a very collaborative group, and anything that we learn from one goal that we've worked on will definitely be shared and implemented across all schools. So at Beal, and you'll notice that this is similar at Spring and I believe at Floral as well, or closely similar. By the end of June, we would like to reduce the number of students who are reporting less than favorably, which is either red or yellow, on the Panorama SEL competency survey. The competency survey really measures the student's sense of belonging and is given in the fall and spring each year. It looks at responses to questions about social awareness, self-efficacy, and emotion regulation. So what does that look like at Beal School? Next slide, please. So we really have two prongs. One, looking at the specific students who are reporting less than favorably on that survey. So what are those students, where are their areas of need, where we need to intervene? And those interventions might look like small social groups with the school adjustment counselor or school psychs. It might be some intervention time in the wind block, in the classroom. So those are very specific targeted interventions for those students. And then the others are just the general, school-wide interventions or actions that we might be taking place. This summer, thanks to, and I'm going to just look real quickly, Rob Matthews in the Port Media Group, they donated these postcards to Beal School. And Shelley Hui, our assistant principal behind me here. And I spent a lot of the summer writing handwritten notes to our staff, and they really reported how that made them feel a sense of belonging at Beal School. And we've committed that every student between now and the end of the school year will also receive a handwritten postcard, just highlighting something fun that we might have noticed, had a conversation with them in the, in the school. And that's, that's one thing that we're going to be doing to work on this goal. The other is really making sure that we're spending time during our morning meeting and having some targeted tier-one instruction based on the SEL calendars that worked through the SEL committee and Dr. Lazott. And we're really looking at those castle competencies. One of the pictures on our slide is a fourth-grade class, and they're talking about, how is it that I'm feeling? And why is it important that I identify how I feel? And why is it important to identify how people around me might be feeling in working towards this goal? We've also set up a system through our student support team process where we've invited classroom teachers to come to our SST meetings when they have two or more students in their classroom that seem to be dysregulated on a regular basis so that we can look at, what are some structures that we can put into place in the classroom to help support those students as a whole? And then finally, if you walk through Beal School, you might see regulation stations. You might see some calm corners where you've got preferred activities in those corners and then also some strategies that students can employ. During our all-school meetings, our students will focus on different types of breathing and then asking everybody to participate in those breathing exercises and then ask, how do you feel now after using those techniques? So those are just a few things that we're doing at Beal School.
So similar to Beal, Spring Street School has a goal related to belonging and then three social-emotional learning capacities: social awareness, emotional regulation, and self-efficacy. We've been doing a lot of work across the district and especially at the elementary group on fostering a sense of belonging for our students over the past few years. This isn't something new they've been working on. We're, we're happy to see the progress that we're making. Our students report favorably that they feel a sense of belonging. 79% of our kids do. The reason why this is a goal is because 21% of our kids don't feel a sense of belonging. So what the first thing we did this year is, using the Panorama data, the social-emotional survey that we administer in the fall, we were able to identify those specific students, there's about 30 of them, who reported that they don't have a sense of belonging at our school. And we met as a team to really identify the student, where are they struggling? Is it self-efficacy, emotional regulation, or social awareness? And then come up with a plan specifically for each student. So each student of those 30, we come up with a plan. Is it, is it a check-in with the school adjustment counselor or school psychologist? Is there additional screening that we need to conduct to their, you know, is there potential that they're anxious or they've got some other type of dysregulation around their emotions? So we did that. And part of that process is this year, like some of the other elementary schools, we started to support one student. So for maybe a dozen of those 20 or 25 students, we had faculty volunteers, faculty and staff volunteers say, I'll help out. I will be a part of this practice that we put into place, that that one faculty or staff member is gonna be connected with that one student. And we survey faculty and staff for interest and likes and try to match similar likes and interests, staff member and student, that that staff member's gonna check in with that student once or twice a week to form a connection. Not, it's not a reward, it's not, you know, it's not contingent upon anything. It's, the student is connecting with that staff member or faculty member every week just to develop a relationship and foster a sense of belonging. What we also did in grades three and four is, as part of our SEL, SEL calendars each month, each month, students, as part of an assessment to see if students are, have a sense of belonging, they re-chair one person they're connected to at school. So we took it a little bit further and made a Google form survey. And kids check in monthly electronically for an adult they have a relationship with, a friend they have a relationship with. And then replicating a question, some of the questions that are asked in Panorama, how much do you feel like you belong? And how much do you feel like you matter? So those are the two questions that kids are struggling with on Panorama. So we wanna assess them once a month to see if they're making progress, if the students were focusing on, are feeling better about being at school, and can have that over the course of the whole entire year to see where kids are doing. You know, sense of belonging, we're doing really well relatively. Emotional regulation's a different story. You know, our, our students are reporting favorably in the 70th, 70%, 75% to self-efficacy and social awareness. That is in the 80th and 99th percentile compared to national responses for kids of those age. Emotional regulation, 40%, 48% of our kids are saying that they can regulate their emotions. 52% can't. So, and that's in the 60th to the 89th, 60 to 79th percentile according to, according to other students that we respond nationally. So we're focusing on emotional regulation. And that might look like, picture in the middle is a recharge room. We call it a recharge room. And once kids have exhausted breathing practices, calm corners in the classroom, talking to the teacher, they have an opportunity to go into this quiet space where there's comfortable chairs, there's posters on the wall with mindfulness breathing reminders, positive messages, affirmation, you can do it, you're great. There's things they can color, the sensory objects, there's just lots and lots and lots of resources that they can use to help them regulate themselves. We have a hallway where there are decals that you can hop and you can skip and you can jump and you can twist and you can do push-ups on the wall and all these ways to get people, kids to calm themselves down. So those are just some of the things that we're working on to focus on, continuing to build that sense of belonging, but also recognizing that our kids are struggling with emotional regulation and what are some initial steps that we can help to support them in learning how to do that successfully.
Okay, Floral is next. There's a theme. We, we're focusing also on social and emotional learning. We are, we're focusing a little bit more on banking up or bulking up our tools that we're using with all students. So all students, all classrooms, all settings, all of the time. So a tier-one kind of a tool. We have plenty in place. Our goal is to implement three more this year, a minimum of three more this year. And really to target where there are specific needs. So really relying on feedback, not just staff, but students. And they, their voice matters. It's pretty accurate. So our goal is implementing the three tools. And if, next slide, please, Dr. Sawyer. So this slide just shares some, some of the, a story of some of the action steps that we have underway. One of the, one of the first tools that we did develop is, is related to kind of paring down our school core values that were written with a lot of language. And a committee of teachers came, got together and culled them down, and the Falcon Four was born. So just, you know, student-friendly, succinct. And, and now, you know, we, we're working really hard to reinforce those principles, those behaviors so, so the students understand what that looks like and sounds like and feels like to be living those out. So we do that, teachers do that masterfully by just integrating it across their day and across messaging. And we do that around school-wide messaging as well. So image B just shows one way, which is our daily morning message in, in the front lobby or foyer, where another just opportunity to reinforce the tools. Because these are tools that teachers are using, but these ultimately are tools that students would be able to use independently and, and do to a certain extent. So image C is, is not a new tool, but it was newly introduced to our students last year. It's called the Tree of Choices. We want to, our goal this year is to continue to use that tool, but this time the goal is for students to use it with increased independence. This tool really gets at conflict resolution. It's a good one. It, it comes from the Character Strong curriculum that the district has, has purchased, and we use components of that program across all of our elementary schools. Image D shows a new, a new, a brand-new hot-off-the-press tool that we introduced in November to students. This came from students as a need. It's the voice thermometer, helping them regulate their voice depending on where they are. It matters where you are. We honed in on the cafeteria because that's where students were saying, I'm uncomfortable. It's uncomfortably loud in here. Teachers were saying, it's, they're, they're, they're running so high, we need to help them get low. And so we introduced the thermometer and set a school-wide goal that we are going to stay at or under a three when we are in the cafeteria. Image E shows some proud fourth-grade boys, once upon hearing that they might be on television. They posed with this photo. Each table has a copy of the voice thermometer with a, with a clothespin at the three. And we use that clothespin in different ways, as staff to give kids feedback, for students to check in and even just say like, oh, boy, I was there, I need to go here. And that it also normalizes that if you don't wanna talk during lunch, you don't have to. You can be at a one, and that's okay, too. It's the Voice Thermometer, helping them regulate their voice depending on where they are. It matters where you are. We honed in on the cafeteria because that's where students were saying, I'm uncomfortable. It's uncomfortably loud in here. Teachers were saying, it's, they're, they're, they're running so high, we need to help them get low. And so we introduced the thermometer and set a school-wide goal that we are going to stay at or under a three when we are in the cafeteria. Image E shows some proud fourth-grade boys, once upon hearing that they might be on television. They posed with this photo. Each table has a copy of the Voice Thermometer with a, with a clothespin at the three, and we use that clothespin in different ways, as staff to give kids feedback, for students to check in, and even just say like, oh, boy, I was there, I need to go here. And that it also normalizes that if you don't want to talk during lunch, you don't have to. You can be at a one, and that's okay, too. The goal is at or under a three. And then Image F is just a snapshot from a survey that we gave to all students in grades one through four to check in on how the Voice Thermometer was working for them. And this is just one question from a very formalized Google Form that they all responded to, where we asked, you know, how, has the voice volume changed since we've used this tool and set our goal? And as you can see, it is, students are telling us that it's making a difference, except for a couple, that it's getting louder. And, and so, you know, we really do want to make sure that students are giving feedback on the tools and how it's helping them. The tools are for them ultimately. So that's just a story about our goal.
Great. So Coolidge is next. We also believe in the importance of belonging and social-emotional learning. However, our school council decided to select an alternate priority this year. We really want to focus in on the optimization of resources, specifically looking for ways to be sure that we're providing equitable access for school-based activities and enrichment opportunities. If you head to the next slide. So we, we know that there are varying activities that are available during the school day, after the school day, before the school day, and we want to be sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and our families so that they can enroll in enrichment activities and opportunities. But these enrichment opportunities do vary from school to school. Some of that is just in the nature and the way that they're offered. For example, our after-school ASAP program, Activities Program, is run by staff who would like to, you know, who have a passion or have an interest, and they create these offerings, which is really exciting, and it helps to promote our staff engagement. However, since COVID, we've really noticed that we have a decrease in, decreased enrollment in enrichment opportunities. We're not exactly sure why. So I did kind of put on the board here some of the offerings and who's the host of, or who created the offering. So our PTO has worked with STEM beginnings for some time now. We tried to start running chess club, and you can see that oftentimes our enrollment is rather low and/or we've had to cancel classes completely. So what we, what we thought about as a council team is really that we needed this action step of asking families and asking students, what are you interested in? Why aren't you enrolling? I think, you know, we can make some guesses at why that might be, but it's really important for us to seek to understand and to gather some data. Is it the day that it's offered? Is it the time that it's offered? Is it the cost of the programming? We do have with every company that we've worked with, like a sliding scale, so that we can provide some scholarships or some reduced fees based on family needs. But that doesn't seem to increase our enrollment. So we think we might be missing the target on what we're offering, when, and what day. And so that, that's really our goal, is once we have this data, to analyze what our families are telling us and consider some new options, reach out to maybe particular staff who might have a skill or an interest, maybe gather outside sources to support us with this as well. But we also started talking about, with the change in school start time, we have this really unique opportunity where we might even be able to add enrichment before the school day. And we also talked about how so many parents reach out to say, you know, I would love to come in and learn from you about how to support my child with reading and thinking about like, is there an opportunity to also have adult enrichment, where maybe you come with your child, or we have some adult classes? We've talked about, you know, multilingual language supports for families that could happen before or after school, too, where you're learning the language with your child. So we have some great ideas kind of brewing, but we've, we want to start with an action step of a survey, gain information, analyze, and then create a plan to move forward.
Similar to Coolidge, Patton's commitment is linked to the opposition, opposition resources, but it's also embedded in our commitment to enhance well-being for all. Our aim as a Patton School Council and community was to enhance our partnerships with our families and community, and also to build upon our community's sense of belonging and connectedness. As such, our goal is to increase upon our current opportunities with Patton Community to engage one another and foster connections. As we move to the next slide, you're going to see a selection of pictures that show our key action steps. The first thing being is that we're looking to enhance our family-based events, especially with our partnership with our PTO. Up here you'll see a picture from this year's movie night. Last year, we had one movie night. This year, we had one in the fall, hoping to have one in the spring. My favorite part of the movie night is that all the families, or more of the parents will watch the movie, and all the kids are on the playground running around. Another thing that we personally did this year is that we had a fall festival, or what we called our back-to-school carnival. Had food trucks, a DJ, and my personal favorite is the Dunk Tank. That's me up there with the dolphin shirt, Dr. Sawyer. But we purposely shifted from the spring to the fall, to so we could welcome all our families back to school and create that sense of belonging. Monthly, we have a Walk to School Day. We partnered with Safe Roots to school. Last year, we did that pretty much bimonthly. This year, we've made a commitment to do it monthly, and we're finding that more and more families are actually joining in those walks to school. So it's another opportunity to build that connections, those connections and belongingness. And picture, I'll see our Patton, our monthly Patton Pride Meetings. Every month, we get together as a Patton Community, where we have our student leaders from our fourth grade run the meeting. But this year, we're personally shifting some of that to also invite community members as keynote speakers. At a November Patton Pride Meeting, we have veteran Ryan Roush, who is a parent of one of our fourth and first graders, give a keynote speech. In future meetings, we're going to have firefighter Mike Guarino and Officer Sean Belair at these meetings to bring together that connection to community. We also see a picture of last year's cultural night. It was one night really to celebrate Patton's diversity and culture. This year, we're looking to expand that to more of a heritage month, so we can have more education opportunities for our students, but also more opportunities for family involvement, which we're looking forward to. This year as a Patton School, we've also wanted to create more buddy classrooms. For example, the picture up there, we have kindergartners and third graders working together. The buddy classrooms, we get together about once per month, and we're trying to make sure over the next few years that every classroom has a buddy classroom. And that's also to build on student connections. And a thing about student connections, we also have amazing volunteerism and partnerships with not only Shrewsbury High School, but the RISE program. On a daily basis, we see students from the RISE program come down and complete their internships at Patton, and they do a fabulous job supporting the Patton Community. And so that is our story. Before moving on to questions, we'd just like to take the opportunity to thank our school-based councils. What we share here this evening is a reflection of their hard work and dedication to the Shrewsbury Public Schools. On behalf of all of our, of all of us, to our councils, please accept our gratitude for your support and commitment to furthering our growth as a learning community.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
I'd just like to thank you all for the excellent presentation, and I wanted to comment on the actual format that you put this improvement plans in, how it tracks the strategic plan and the format that we used, and I found that extremely helpful because we can see the goals very clearly, the action steps, and then also who, you know, is responsible for those goals. So I thought that was very well done. I'd also like to extend our thanks, you know, on behalf of the school committee, to all the participants on the school councils. I know it's a time commitment for parents, staff members, and some community members that volunteer their time to help put these plans together and to participate. And I just also wanted to comment on the collaborative nature of your presentation and how wonderful it is that you all share these resources, that you bounce all these ideas off each other. I just think it's so helpful and it just go to the benefit of all the schools and the community. So thank you for all your hard work.
Lindsay.
Yeah, I really appreciate all of it. Lovely to have you all with us this evening. I was a school council member for, I think, five or six years at Patton before I joined the, the school committee, and I think my perception at the time, I think, I think there are important avenues for information, but it also sometimes felt like we didn't quite know what we were here to do. We want to help, but this feels so much more focused, like we, we've, we've put time and so aligned to the, to the overarching district goals. And now, I think to see, you know, all sorts of things we can, we can hate about COVID, it does seem like it's brought our elementary schools really together in a way that, that you've continued long past, obviously, the impacts of the pandemic, but to see the ways that you're thinking about literacy across, and how are we all doing assessments, and how are we thinking about, I mean, the, the feedback for families, that seems just so huge, and I really appreciate that. It was, I think, a piece we, we heard from Amy a few months ago that, like, we're working on that, like, well, you're, it's really all your work to work on that and to figure that out and, and to be comprehensive. So there's, there's incredible, incredible work to do here, and it's, it's, but it's really great, and it also feels, you know, lots of it for your, for your staff, and the focus on literacy seems sort of very much appropriate and right on, but then these other very important pieces to build the cultures we want, also do feel manageable. Okay, we're going to do three of them, we're going to do this thing, right? We're going to, we're going to chunk it out and do the things that we, that we can get done. So I hope that we're managing change, change well, and it feels like you, you all are. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate the collaborative presentation. I, I do like the way that we're measuring success with the data. It's good early results. I think that's great. I also really like, and I've always appreciated how the school council operates. You've got a mix of teachers and, and, and parents, and you're really getting, you know, the feedback that you need for each, each school. I also like, too, the, the sense of belonging, like it was called out as a strength in that security audit, and we just continue to churn away at it. It's so important, and I like the sense of community that you're all creating amongst your schools because it gives class, it gives students a way to connect with their classmates outside of class, and I think that really goes a long way. So thank you so much.
I too, thank you so much for this presentation and also to your, your councils. Even though, when you first look at this, and you can say that Beal and Floral and Spring all had similar tasks that they were working on, when you were giving the presentation, you could get a flavor of each one of the schools and how, even though it's, it's the social-emotional learning, how different it is at Floral and Beal and Spring, and the difference in how you're checking in and doing these things. But also, I appreciate how at each school, Coolidge and Patton just stuck out a little bit, just because you had a little bit different of a goal to seek, but you're, you're looking for collaboration, not just through the school committee, not through just the district leadership, principals, staff, but that you're actually tapping into families, into the students, and making them part of the solution. Because it's easy for us to say, this is what's going to happen, and this is how we're changing it, but that may not work for families and students. So getting their input is huge to this, and I'm looking forward to seeing at the end of the year how this all comes together. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I agree. I think it's the shared, the shared goals, but then you have your individual goals, which will also be shared. So it's that whole community piece, and I do like, it's not top-down management. We're going out to the students and staff and families to make sure that we're doing the things that families need, because sometimes you may think that this is what we need, but then you hear from a family or a student, you go, oh, I didn't even think of that. I just think it's such a collaborative effort, and that's what we really want to see. I love the piece with having trusted adults. That's something we've been hearing through a lot of surveys, having that trusted adult, because not every child has that at home. So that's another key piece. One question I did have on the Panorama surveys, those are not anonymous. The student can be identified by that survey. Because I, I just thought they were anonymous. So that's how you're getting that data to really be specific around that specific child's needs, so I think that's great. And the other piece, like John mentioned, the data-driven and the measures, so we can do that district-wide, and for the school committee, that really helps us for budgeting. So we have a, a strong idea of what the data is and what the needs are, so that we can bring that to the finance committee and the select board when we're discussing why we need X, Y, or Z in our budget. So that's extremely helpful. So thank you, and thank you to all the school councils, because many of us, that's where we started as parents, and they may be up here someday. So thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
That is true. I want to thank, I actually want to start by thanking the school committee with the work that you move forward in terms of our strategic planning process over the past year plus. I do think we're, in the time I've been in Shrewsbury, this is the tightest we've been in terms of, you know, sort of a district-level, school-level connection around what's important and the messaging during a time when there is an awful lot happening, giving us essentially permission to focus and not expect it to be all things to all people and focus on what's most important based on a very thorough community process, identifying what our community thought was most important, stakeholders, both families as well as staff, students, and of course, our leaders. I also want to take the opportunity, of course, to thank the school councils as well. I want to echo everything that was said, but I do want to take the opportunity to point out just how extraordinary the leaders that are here this evening. The first who I'll point out are sitting behind them, which are our two assistant principals at the elementary level, Gina Kelly and Shelley Hoy. Gina Kelly at Floral Street School and Shelley Hoy at Beal School. Our two larger schools also have assistant principals, and they are treated as essentially equals on the leadership team, which I think speaks a lot to the culture of the leadership among the elementary schools. And I want to also thank and, and signal appreciation for the five school leaders who presented this evening. While, you know, first off, going to an elementary school in Shrewsbury is an extraordinary experience for kids. And, and I think it's well-known, we have an excellent reputation for a variety of reasons, but I think when we think of the three commitments we're making in our strategic plan to educational excellence, to the enhanced well-being of all, and to the optimization of resources, if you visit our elementary schools, you see all those things in practice right away, and you cannot go very far without smiling and noticing that number one, kids are having a blast and they're engaged, but you also see, and if you know something about how it all works, it's a very sophisticated level of planning and instruction and implementation of curriculum that all of our educators and support staff at, at the elementary school should be very proud of. At the same time, and, and just as a little bit of a preview, two weeks from this evening, I'll be giving the annual State of the District Report, and I'll certainly refer to this in some more detail at that time. But the, the landscape right now in public education is very challenging, and that includes our elementary grades. We have students who were affected deeply by the pandemic, who's, are going to take a long time to recover from the experiences that they had, or the lack of experiences they may have had as a result, which isn't anybody's fault, but it's a, it's a, it's an experience that we all had to, are adjusting to. And while the vast majority of our kids are thriving, there are, you know, too many who aren't, and there is a very small percentage of students who are having an extraordinarily difficult time and are creating situations that these leaders and their teams are needing to spend an enormous amount of time and energy and skill to manage. And it's, I certainly appreciate that from my perspective as superintendent. I know their staffs and their parent communities and, and student bodies do as well, but, you know, not everyone has that vantage point to know just how much. And what I notice is that in dealing with these very, very challenging and difficult situations, as well as just rolling out sophisticated plans, like the one certainly with Ms. Clowder's leadership and, and the various folks, but the principals are really, you know, the, the point of each school, making sure instructional, leadership-wise, our literacy program is being implemented properly and successfully, they just care deeply about the success of their school communities, about what kids are getting, how they're being educated, how they're being treated, and how they feel hopefully that they belong and can thrive as a part of, of a community. And it is going to have impact. We're going to have our high school team in a moment here, but we know what happens in K-4 continues to have repercussions on kids' success in middle school and high school, and frankly, even beyond that. So I want to express my gratitude. I think the plans are spot-on, and I am very much looking forward to seeing the progress that's made and what, how this builds upon itself year over year over this five-year sequence. So thank you, and again, very deeply appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we are going to have the Shrewsbury High School Program of Studies proposed changes report. Each year, the high school leadership team makes recommendations for adjustments to the course offerings based on a variety of factors, and we have Mr. Vizidlo, the high school principal, along with SHS staff, who will highlight the proposed changes for the 2024, 2025 school year. Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Hopefully we can connect here. Spinning. There we go. Great. Thanks for having us. This is an annual review for us. I'll let everyone introduce themselves who are joining me tonight, and I guess I'll start my presentation. So Dave, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, Dave Riscosi, Director of Science and Engineering.
Hello, Erica Pratt, Director of PE, Health, Family, Consumer Science.
Hello, Maureen Monopoly, Assistant Principal at the high school, and I'm in charge of curriculum and assessment.
So every year, we take a look at the Program of Studies, and, and we do an annual review with our directors. Part of that is really deeply connected to the course selection process, which we'll talk a little bit more after this slide, but I think it's important for us, the committee and also people in the community to understand the kind of timeline and how long it is. So I'll just go through this very quickly. You have a very detailed memo about the dates and times and very explaining everything, but I'll kind of give a twenty-thousand-foot view here. So starting on February 5th through the 19th, school councils will conduct presentations for our students around what's in the Program of Studies. for our students around what's in the Program of Studies, which will present changes tonight, propose changes tonight, and I think you'll vote on it at the subsequent meeting, I think, on January 24th. After those presentations, teachers actually place in Power School the recommendations for what they believe students should be placed in for the next year, along that Mrs. Monopoly and school counseling department and advanced placement teachers actually conduct an advanced placement information meeting for students and families who might be interested in advanced placement participation in that program. That happens on February 7th this year in the school auditorium at 6:30.
Correct.
And if any junior or senior is interested in participating in advanced placement course, I think that it behooves parents and students to attend, that means to know, to understand the parameters of what they're getting into. On February 13th, I've been in communication with Mrs. Burek, the Oak Middle School principal, to communicate this to her families, but we'll have an eighth-grade curriculum night for rising ninth graders where families will, parents will come, no students, parents will come and cycle through a series of four presentations or four geographic spaces within the high school to meet with department directors to talk about individualized specific programming so you can get your feet wet kind of understanding what the course selection process is and what the courses are. And what's really unique about our high school in comparison maybe with others is that our school counselors meet individually with students and this takes, as you can see, it's about a month-long process. They'll have one-on-one meetings to look at students' course selection process to ensure they're appropriately placed and looking, one of our goals we'll talk about is how do we extend and expand advanced course offerings to students by having another set of eyes encouraging people to take a look at what they're taking in their schedule. So this is one of the counselors' roles which they'll do. Then what will end up happening, once all these things are in Power School, we basically get the course tallies and then we start, then we have directors to allocate our teaching staff to each section and start to sections, how many English courses we'll run in grade nine, how many history courses, you know, it goes every course at the high school, we'll have a conversation about that. That includes class size, setting of a average class size. By May, sorry, April 3rd, we start to determine teaching sections, who's going to teach what course. My apologies, course placement meetings are due by 3:29, which means if students and families don't agree with a teacher's recommendation for a course, they can meet student, teacher, director to talk about that and school counselor to talk about that placement and determine if it's a mistake or if the student wants to take it. Those all have to be done by March 29th. Then we set teaching assignments and then we spend a lot of time doing data entry to clean up, to get ready for the, our information system to run the algorithm to build the schedule. And Mrs. Wen, who's the Assistant Principal for Student Services, is our master scheduler. She spends her very quiet April vacation at SHS with no interruptions and it's probably her favorite time of the year in terms of no one's entering her office to say we have a problem. So it's a very quiet time for her, but she needs that time during that week to start building the schedule. It's kind of really, really tedious, arduous work, so she does that during that week and then to the end of the month. And then we take everyone into Power School, we load it into the schedule, see where you get out. And from May 20th to June 12th, we actually, school counselors go back and start to resolve conflicts, that they may have double bookings, an AP, an orchestra class, a chorus class, a health, like, there's, there might be conflicts, so they resolve those conflicts and the hope is get the master schedule done on the last day of school, no snow days on June 12th. That's the hope. So students can leave knowing that their schedule's set for the year and understanding kind of where they stand with, if they received all the courses that they selected. They won't get that schedule saying, here's what period is, here's what the teacher is, but the understanding of, they signed up for a series of courses and that's what their schedule will be. So, this really dovetails nicely into our previous, from our previous presentation with the elementary school principals, the idea of our commitment to educational excellence and I foreshadowed this a little bit about increasing the opportunities to take students to take advanced coursework in order to meet the state accountability system improvement targets. So we're really focused on this. We've had a lot of conversations starting last February, I think Dr. Soria and Mrs. Clowder came to a high school leadership team meeting. We had lots of conversations about how we can accomplish this, so we kind of started this work last year. We're continuing to work on this as we try and push more students into advanced courses. What is an advanced course, you might ask? It could be an honors course, it could be advanced placement course, or it could be a project lead the way course. And we look at those metrics particularly at subgroups and what they look like and are we actually meeting the needs of all students? And there are some, when you look at some of the DESE metrics, we're not quite there, so we have to really focus on that. So we take a hard look at that. These are just, and I'll post this on our website, but these are the dates so we know for the presentations on course selection, so we have multiple events that are actually, we'll have them staffed with, we've had this in the past, staffed with interpreters for families who might speak their native language and might not be English. So we actually have interpreters that will loop with people through these events to make sure that they understand what the process may be. A new feature this year, if you look at the third, fourth bullet down, actually SHS counselors will actually be headed down to Oak Middle School to meet with their teams to talk about what the potential course of studies and selection process looks like, so they have a real clear understanding, students do, and it'll help their teachers with their course recommendations as well to go directly from our counselors. And that'll happen prior to our February break. Additionally, we've reported on this previously this year, but also we continue our work on it at the high school. Dr. Lozot, Mr. Riscosi, Mrs. Flynn, Director of School Counseling, and I are working on this next priority around creating career and technical pathways. We're working on completing, just lost me. Hold please. We're working on completing a grant, an expansion grant for Project Lead the Way to create more innovation career pathways. And two areas that we're going to focus on with this is under engineering for advanced manufacturing and under life science would be biomedical science for the next school year. And we'll talk more about that in a couple minutes. So what are innovation career pathways? They're basically pathways developed to provide students opportunities to explore potential career pathways aligned with our regional labor needs, regional labor needs. We work with the Central Mass Regional Labor Office to talk about what they're looking for, the needs of the, the needs of the future labor needs of our region basically in Central Massachusetts. They've identified two that we can, are targeting and that's the advanced manufacturing and also the life science and the biomedical. Additionally, this is in response to our students not having access to Asavet Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School. And last spring, we actually began this pathway programs in response to students not having access to Asavet. We had a few pathways that we started to get into this space, but the innovation career pathways designation from the state is also aligned with some grant money. So, as you see in the fourth bullet, we'll talk a little bit about there, each one of these innovation career pathways is a three-course full-year sequence and the fourth year provides options for an internship and capstone project or a work-study option. So, going back to the spring in response to the Asavet issue, here's the pathways that we developed. They're not connected to the state per se, but they are a good way for students to kind of understand a better, or get a better understanding of potential interests or careers to study. We have the business pathway with a four-course sequence. We have childcare and child development with a two-course sequence. We have computer science with a four-course sequence and our ever-popular TV production and film with a three-course sequence. And all of these can end with an internship and/or capstone. And the new proposed innovation career pathway under life science is the biomedical industry. We've had the ninth and 10th grade course already in our Program of Studies. The third course we'd add next year would be medical interventions, which was grade 11. And the 12th grade year will be, again, an industry internship, work-study, capstone Engineering, we've already have two of those courses already designed within the Program of Studies, Introduction to Engineering Design and Principles of Engineering. The 11th grade course is Computer Integrated Manufacturing and again, the 12th grade year would be an internship or work-study or capstone project. We can talk more about that, we'll take questions, I think, at the end, but we can talk more about that. We're really kind of deep in that and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Monopoly who will lead us through some of the other changes or proposed changes rather for our Program of Studies.
Great, thank you so much. The first change, came prepared, came prepared. All right, the first change we'd like to discuss is with the English department. We'd like to eliminate the B-level English courses for our grades nine and 10 students and we'd like to enroll all of those B-level students into either 9A or 10A courses and have those courses supported by a co-taught team. So either a special educator and an English teacher together to support the students. This is linked to our, our value of equity and linked to educational excellence and having our students stretch and lean into more challenging courses. The teams also will provide really high-quality instruction and we have some great professional development for our co-taught teachers. And the next department I'd like to discuss for our English Language Education, we'd like to add a new course for our newcomers. It's called the ELE Newcomer Language and Skills Course. And this skill, this course will really focus on our students who are new to the country and we, through their testing scores, through the WIDA access scores, we would identify them along with teachers and provide this, students with this course that will help range the topics in this course, would range from academic topics into social skills, into talking about school culture and even just acclimating to the United States and American culture.
Dr. Pratt?
Okay, the next department in Family Consumer Science, we are adding Foods of the World for next year. This is an alternating course, it happens every other year, so this is very typical for us. Foods of the World will be offered next year, Mediterranean cuisine will be offered, will not be offered next year. Moving into the Physical Education and Health Education Departments, we have removed the first paragraph of the preamble under the Health and Physical Education heading in the Program of Studies with a description and then we have removed all existing course titles from Physical Education classes known as strands and we are now replacing those with a Physical Education Level One, grade nine and 10, and Physical Education Level Two, grades 11 and 12. And I have a rationale on the next slide. So the reason for this change is so that it creates a new course structure for the implementation of the 20, the new 2023 Health and PE frameworks, so that we have more flexibility for new content, for different programming. And then also, we provide more flexibility for students' yearly schedules in scheduling students across grade level rather than by strands. This will open up space for students to take electives and have more continuity in their schedules, so Physical Education isn't taking up the spaces where it has in the past. And then lastly, this will provide flexibility for our Physical Education teachers to implement new content without the existing strand constraints. So instead of teaching content based on categories, we teach content based on developmental practices throughout the grades, grade spans. And that is all for our departments. Thank you.
Okay, I'm up again. And there's several changes for the Technology, Media and Business Department. So the first proposed change we would like to do is to add a course. We'd like to add broadcast journalism and TV production for morning announcements. And so this is an authentic course where our students will develop our morning announcements. We have a seven-day cycle at the high school and these students who participate in this course will produce morning announcements for five days out of that seven-day cycle. So it will be a really intense course, I think. It will help the students develop these production skills, technical skills, all associated with our TV studio. And the students will also participate in a monthly show filmed outside of the school that they'll be able to incorporate into these morning announcements. We'd like to remove the multimedia applications, advanced multimedia applications from this department and dropping it from the Program of Studies. We'd also like to adjust the titles for the following courses. So we would like to add Project Lead the Way to all of the courses coming up. So for our Computer Science I honors course, we'd like to change that course name to Project Lead the Way Computer Science Principals Honors. We'd like to change our current course called Computer Science II Honors to Project Lead the Way Computer Science A Honors. And we'd like to change Cyber Security to Project Lead the Way Cyber Security. The rationale with all of this is because our teacher has participated in the training for Project Lead the Way. We want to add the titles, Project Lead the Way to the titles so that it highlights that these are Project Lead the Way courses. Even though we follow the curriculum, it's just a way for the state to also be able to identify these courses as Project Lead the Way courses, which would also flag that these are advanced courses as well and advanced coursework. When students apply to college, they'll be able to highlight that also on their college applications. And now the Common App also includes information where students can check off whether or not they participated in a Project Lead the Way course. So we feel that it's in the best interest to change the titles to reflect the Project Lead the Way. And then finally, we'd like to remove the following course, Intro to Computer Programming with Java. It was a semester course, but we've transitioned to full-year courses, our computer science courses incorporate Java and they, it's essentially replace these skills. So this course is, there's two other courses that offer the same.
Science and Engineering. So the first slide here is courses that we are looking to remove. The first is Lab Introphysics. It's a course that students would take in grade nine as a supportive MCAS-based course and what we're doing now is having the students that would normally go into that course take Foundations of Biology, so that they would take biology over the course of two years. It's a, it's a program that we've seen work with other schools and so having students take biology over the course of two years gives them more opportunity to master that concept and be successful for MCAS testing. The next two courses are engineering courses, Exploring Technology and Robotics Electronics. So these are semester courses that have kind of run their lifespan and because we are making way for a more streamlined Project Lead the Way engineering program, the concepts, the skills, the experiences that students would have in these courses are found in the Project Lead the Way courses that we're bringing in. So, student experiences will not necessarily change in terms of what they're learning, but it helps us streamline and make room for the Project Lead the Way courses we're bringing in. Which leads us to the next slide, courses that we're looking to add. So number four and number seven, Medical Interventions and Computer Integrated Manufacturing, those are both Project Lead the Way courses that we're excited to bring in as a pathway that Mr. Bizidlo had talked about earlier. So, those would continue Project Lead the Way sequences. And then I just mentioned the Foundations of Biology as the course that's replacing the Lab Introphysics, so that it would be a two-year biology program for those students. Number six is talking about changes in language. So up to now, our Project Lead the Way Biomed Courses, which are PBS, Principles of Biomedical Science, and HB, Human Body Systems, HBS. Both of those are courses that are offered at the senior, junior, senior level. But in order for us to implement this pathway, we need to change those courses to make them available at the ninth, 10th grade level, so then students would progress from grade nine, 10, 11 through a sequence of these courses. So it's really making a change in who has access to these courses. We're going to still continue to make them available for juniors and seniors that wish to take them, but students that are participating in the pathway would then be opened up to that.
I'm up again. For our Performing Arts, the Voice and Acting Course and the Theatrical Design Course, we switch every other year with our Theater Arts Course. So they will not be offered next year, but will hopefully be offered the following year. And then we'd also like to make some minor language changes for our Windows Ensemble Concert Band and Jazz. Concert Band and Jazz Band in the course description. Just to clarify, for, that students are expected to participate in outside performances, whether it's evening concerts, or a parade, or a football game. We just want the students and parents to be aware that that is part of the course requirement as well. With our Visual Arts Department, we'd like to eliminate the Art Foundations Course. This was due to low enrollment, but it was also, for the students who did participate in this course, they will still have the option for other introductory art classes and art opportunities. But because of the low enrollment, we found that it just was not working. We'd also like to add a new course. It's called Character Design and Intro to Animation. So we're really excited about this. And where the class will focus more on the pre-production part of animation. They'll involve character design, environments, props, et cetera, and really give the students a foundation in that area of art. We would also like to add a new course called Digital Studio Art, which is an iPad-based art course. So students will use a program on their iPads to help their digital art illustration capabilities. And we're finding that there's more interest in that, or students have interest in that line of art. And then finally, we're, we'd like to make a change with our Traditional and Digital Photography. We do not want this to be offered as a co-taught class anymore. So that's the change there.
And that's about it?
No, we have World Languages.
Sorry. One more to go.
And then with our World Languages, we would like to add a course called Heritage Portuguese Four. We have, this, this program has really grown in the school and students are, there's continued interest with it, and so this program is just building. And so we'd like our students to continue their exploration of Heritage Portuguese. And then we'd also like to add honors level course credit for our Heritage Courses as an option for our students, and that's in both the Portuguese and the Spanish Heritage Courses.
Okay, now that's it. So we're happy to take any questions you may have for us.
Great, thanks. Questions?
I have a comment first and then a question. I think it's a great idea that you're planning to have the counselors go in and speak to the eighth graders in February, especially with these new Project Lead the Way initiatives, to really explain those and kind of see what the interest level is. And so I really, I applaud that. I think that's a great idea. I do have a question about Project Lead the Way, and it looks like it's kind of the way that most of them are structured, that you would start them in ninth grade. And my question is if a student maybe decides, you know, in 10th grade or 11th grade that they may be interested, is there a way that they could somehow, you know, go and start in the first class or make up some ground? Or how would that work?
Yeah, so, so we're deep in this grant writing.
I can, I can answer.
Well, I'll just, I'll go. The entry point is ninth grade. Entry point is either ninth or 10th grade, but there would be available, so we have to, with Innovation Pathways piece, we look to fill those slots first, seats first. Depending on enrollment and when it comes down to course tallies, what we have. If there's demand and we have the sections available, we can offer additional sections. If there's also seats available for 11th or 12th graders, we can offer it to 11th and 12th graders. But in order, in order to get the full sequence of the three courses in a hundred-hour internship under this Innovation Pathways designation for students, we'd have to go through the whole sequence. But say if you're a junior and there's availability in Computer Integrated Manufacturing and that might be interested you, you could take that. Or Medical Interventions, you might be able to take that. Dave?
That's perfect.
Yeah, so.
Just thinking like a student may, down the line, become interested in something.
Right.
An eighth grader may not, you know, oh, you know, manufacturing, what is that? You know, so maybe, you know, by 10th grade, they may express an interest. Would they be able to get into the program?
Yeah, so it'd be flexibility in ninth and 10th grade, and then availability of seats for 11th and 12th. And then really look at course tallies to see what we have and see what we have available for sections in teaching, in teaching FTEs.
And everything, I'm understanding the question too, and of course, this is new ground for us. So we have to figure some of this out, and of course, we need to see what the demand is and how that's playing out. I think there will be demand, and I think the fact that we're sending counselors to Oak and we'll be talking with the kids at the high school very specifically. But in terms of, you know, whether someone could sort of catch up and maybe start as a sophomore, they're year-long courses, you know, would there a year where a student, a student could double up and take two courses in the same year? Obviously, start running into other obligations they have for English and math and other graduation requirements. So that may be tricky. So I think that remains to be seen. But in terms of, you know, access to the courses themselves, I think with seats available, we certainly want to fill those seats. But I think we'll probably need to get our feet under us that first year and kind of see how it's playing out as far as anybody being able to enter at later points. But, you know, the idea is we want to provide kids with access however we can if they're interested. And, you know, these are going to be some really very interesting courses of study for kids to take, and I'm excited about the idea to be able to take advantage of these courses.
I think what we would want to do is explore where their entry point would be, whether we actually want them to start at that first introductory course, or whether we just jump them into the second course. Because as it is now, like with engineering, you could take Intro to Engineering and Design or Principles of Engineering if you're, like, in other words, it's not like you need one in order to take the other, at least under the way that we operate it now. And same with our Principles of Biomed or Human Body Systems. So is it possible that a student jumps in without taking that first? It's not ideal, but that might be one way to solve a situation like this as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Lindsay?
I'm super excited. I have a few questions, though. And so I guess it would be helpful if we could just, I worry that for folks listening, we, there's a lot of knowledge by the people here about what you mean when you say an Invasion Pathway and what you mean with Project Lead the Way, but they blur together a bit, and that is a little confusing. And I just found myself being like, oh wait, I got myself confused again. And so like in the computer science space, there's a Computer Science Innovation Pathway, which includes Project Lead the Way designated courses? Is that the right framework? Can you just help me out? And mostly, it's not just me. I think there's other people that we, we just need to like be a little tighter about it, if, because if I'm confused, I'm super invested and I want it to work. I just don't, I also want to explain it well.
No, I appreciate that question, because I could understand why it would be confusing. And, and I think the place to start would be that Project Lead the Way is a national organization that produces curriculum.
Okay.
And they produce curriculum for engineering, they produce curriculum for computer science, they produce curriculum for biomedical. And so they kind of have the curriculum. This is what's going to be taught. These are the courses that you're going to be learning. So that is, as you said, separate from the pathways, which are, I think you would be a.
Sure. So in the Project Lead the Way, teachers are required to attend training, whether it's a WPI or RPI or wherever it may be. Project Lead the Way actually does professional development. We pay for teachers to attend that. And the idea behind Project Lead the Way, someone in Cleveland, Ohio is going to have the same program as someone in Shrewsbury, at Shrewsbury.
Are they, are they different from how people think about APs, though, because they don't have a common assessment? And people think about APs, often we talk about the AP test a lot. Project Lead the Way has something similar to that?
Yeah, so, so AP is a little bit different, because there's, there's themes that people can cover within AP. And not every student has to read the same book in AP, say AP Language or AP Literature, okay? Teachers would submit a syllabus to the college board. The college board approves that as long as they meet the criteria for what the topics or themes are supposed to be covered. They could have a variety of piece of literature or works they're going to read. Project Lead the Way, the curriculum is same. They do have an end-of-the-year assessment that gets reported back to the organization. So if you participate in BOE, IED, whatever, Computer Science, there is an end-of-the-year assessment, and they collect data on it around Project Lead the Way courses. But our teachers have been trained through Project Lead the Way professional development at local or traditionally universities around STEM universities. So that's the difference. Innovation Pathways, Innovation Career Pathways is a designation from the state that is connected to grant money to get these pathways off the ground. And the idea is that we want to expose students to rich field experiences, a rich curriculum, and have field experiences determine whether or not they want to follow this career pathway and not go on to college/university, or continue on to a two-year college/university, or go on to a four-year college/university to study. So the Innovation Pathways that we're looking at to expand, that's connected to MONT, that's connected to dollars, are the Life Science Biomedical Industry and the Engineering and Advanced Manufacturing. We, we're in a really good position as a result of already having some of the infrastructure in place through Mr. Riscosi's kind of vision around bringing in engineering and also the life science piece prior to, because there was demand, much like we have with the business program. Five years ago, we didn't have any business offerings. We had one accounting course that would rarely fill, and now we have, we sent 100 students to the DCU Center for our DECA program. We sent another different, whole another 100 students tomorrow. And our business offerings are the highest demanded courses in the school now. And that's after only a couple of years. I forget exactly when we implemented that, but the, the demand is outstripping our capacity. The idea with the Innovation Pathway, same thing, is trying to get students exposed to different types of careers that potentially could result in them either following it in college or getting right into labor workforce. So Innovation Pathways right now, we're looking to write a grant for potentially up to $75,000 per pathway to get each pathway off the ground, get materials, training, everything in place to kind of get the thing lifted and in place. Dr. LaZott has been working, I have been working with Kathleen Cohen on setting up these internships and creating partnerships. So I know we reported on it in the past, but all this thing, all these things are going on in parallel. So yeah, that's kind of where we are with it. Did I answer your question? I'm sorry, yes?
No, I think, I think, I think I got it. I think I got it. And I think it's, I'm, I'm very supportive. I just think we, when trying to explain, when some things have a sort of an, you know, an external sort of seal of some sort of, and also is, is a place where we're sort of saying, these are courses of some rigor that we're trying to encourage certain students into. And others have a, are designed sometimes with some different reasons and different intentionality around, you know, career exposure and checking, checking things out. And so, and they do have a, they have a reality that they do meld together a little bit here, at least in some, in some of them. So I'm appreciating why I was a little confused. Is the, is the hope that on the Innovation Career Pathways that, you know, I really appreciated how you laid out, for instance, in the biomedical, right? Here's, here's ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. The question about, well, what if someone's off cycle a little bit or does something differently? But then we have some courses in the, you know, computer science or, excuse me, or in the, in business where there are a lot of semester-based courses? It seems like semester-based courses have this, they feel a little like easier to try and then change your mind versus a year-long commitment to something. But it, but I'm wondering, just in the design of the new programs, those, I think those are all year-long courses. Is the hope that each pathway has a, this is what they do in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th, whereas like the business one seems to have, you know, business, marketing, finance? And I imagine kids could maybe take those in a different order? Or maybe you just didn't put up a ninth, 10th, 12th, and there actually is a progression?
No, you're, no, you're right.
Yeah.
So the sequence for the Biomed and the Engineering/Manufacturing, is that's the sequence?
Yep.
For, in the Computer Science, there's a certain sequence, Computer Science I, and then you could take a Cyber, or Computer Science I, and then Computer Science A, and then Cyber? So is there a variety of ways you could do it?
Yep.
But the other offerings are, the business offerings are non-sequential.
Okay.
Child Development sequential, the TV is sequential, they're foundational courses where the business ones aren't necessarily foundational. I do think we want to get to, if I can just go back here to the business offerings, I do believe we start off with Intro to Business is kind of the first course, and then people have an option to take Marketing, Personal Finance, or Accounting.
Yep.
But because of demand, that's not how we run it. We run it like, let's fill the number of seats we have for sections based upon what the demand is. So if we might have Intro to Business and Marketing running the same semester, those students might flip to the next semester and do the opposite the following semester. So.
And I think I'm, I, I'm sorry, I'll stop after this. The, I think what I'm just recognizing, or calling out a little bit, I love that you're going to talk to eighth graders. I have an eighth grader. I can't wait to go home and have this conversation and say, what do you, this is hard for an eighth grader, though, to have a sense of. And what we've learned from our conversations around, around ASVET and vocational is that oftentimes the things that young people are interested in or sort of match into in those, in those sort of programs, aren't necessarily what they're interested in. And so having a program with some structure that tell, that helps young people who, who need that to kind of get organized is great. And then there are 14-year-olds who need some flexibility, and so, and we don't have any space in the building, right? And so like you're really constrained in a whole bunch of, in a whole bunch of different things. But how do we kind of, as we build this out, also be adaptable, I guess, is what's in the back of my, back of my brain about, about all of these things? Because I want them all to succeed and to have full enrollment in all of them, and yet that's, to your point of business wasn't that, we weren't that interested in that a few years ago. I imagine you're going to find a lot more interest in the Advanced Manufacturing, but I, I don't know, what do I know? Right? Just because, just because my peers are talking about that, that doesn't mean that eighth graders' peers are talking about that, right? So it's going to be really fascinating. I'm very excited, and I appreciate your getting into the weeds with me a little, a little bit. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we've been hearing from families about wanting more opportunity for experience. Maybe it's in rigor, maybe it's just in a certain area of the curriculum. So I think this is broadening what we offer for more students. I love the pathways, the Project Lead the Way and all the things that we're moving to. And if I understand, for the, the life sciences and the medical engineering, these are building, because you have to learn this concept before you can go to the next concept. So I think, you know, we, we can lay that out for parents and students, why we have it in this sequence. The only thing that concerns me is, I mean, the high school space. So we've got all these great things, but we also are going to have limited numbers of students who are going to be able to participate in some of these really neat, cool things that we're doing. And now we know that we haven't been put into the pipeline for the MSBA, but we hope to, hope to put it back in there for this next round. But I think to me, this is great, but again, space is, is our, probably our biggest thing. Is that how you feel, like you would love to have more?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
For certain.
Because I look at space almost, I mean, there is a financial piece, but I think the space is number one. And then, you know, the financial sector, we can't even add anything because we just don't have the space for half of what we want to do. So this is great work. I think things have really progressed over the years since, you know, I've been on this committee to really offering things for students that everybody might be interested in, or give them an experience or an internship, things we didn't do before, which is going to make it easier for them as they try to decide what they want to do for their adulting life and for college and that. So thank you. I know there's a lot of work every year to go through. Nothing else? Dr. Soria, any comments or questions?
No, I certainly think the comments and the questions were on target, and I appreciate the work that the leadership team at the high school did to put this together. I think there are some thoughtful recommendations around how to evolve some of these programs. I think that, you know, finding ways to provide opportunities to all different kids and not just those whose families might be more in the know because they attended college themselves or have a little bit of a sense of how the system works around APs or honors classes or Project Lead the Way and those kinds of things. So the, appreciate the work that the Counseling Department's going to be doing to really get the word out, and that the leadership team I know is working hard and will be working hard with the faculty around, how do we make sure we're identifying students who could benefit from these different types of rigorous courses who, just like all of us at some point, if you think back to when you were a young person, you know, oftentimes you don't necessarily have the self-confidence to, or self-belief that you can do something. And, and an adult tapped you on the shoulder and said, I think you can, and it's going to be hard work, but I believe in you and you can do it. And there's been a lot of successful lives and careers launched as a result of that. And I think that happens already in so many different ways at Shrewsbury High School. Lots of opportunities for kids and educators and support staff who are doing their best to provide kids with opportunities. But how can we, as a system, make sure we're trying to do those kinds of things and provide, as with the Physical Education Program, you know, more flexibility for our staff and students to, to get those great experiences? How do we, I applaud Ms. Trombley and the English Department around dropping the B-level courses and, and I'm reminded of that happening a number of years ago at Oak where there were sort of like three levels of math instead of only two, and, and raised the bar and made sure that we were going to provide the support the kids needed to get access. But we know getting access to appropriate curriculum and coursework is a, is a huge difference-maker for students in terms of their, their prospects for high school and beyond. So again, I applaud the work and all the work around, and significant, I know Dr. LaZott is here in the back as well, that she and Mr. Bizidlow, Mr. Riscosi, Ms. Flynn from the Counseling Department have been doing to get the pathways launched. And we're hopeful about the grant funding coming in to help us do that. In a moment, we'll accept some grant funding from Project Lead the Way, I hope you will, to help launch some of those pieces as well. And again, some exciting things that are happening. And the last point I will make is that. the last point I will make is that, you know, obviously, not having access to the vocational technical program at Assabed is a challenge and something we wish weren't the case. It has forced us to do some of this work that you're seeing that is going to benefit those students who didn't, aren't getting that opportunity any longer, who would have. But it's also going to benefit kids who never would have thought about going to Assabed, yet will be able to benefit from these different career pathway sequences. So I think, in that sense, that's a, that's a silver lining, and I think very exciting for the opportunities our, our students will have in the future. So thank you very much for all the hard work, and we'll post this on our website, of course, and then at your meeting two weeks from this evening, based on any feedback, you may have received in the meantime, we'll ask that you vote to approve the program of studies so they can move forward with the process.
Thank you again.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, under Finance and Operations, we have a grant funding acceptance. At the September 6th and December 20th meetings, the school committee voted to accept state and federal grants. On December 21st, the district was awarded a ten thousand dollar Project Lead the Way engineering grant to assist with the expansion of student access to Project Lead the Way engineering coursework in partnership with Lockheed Martin. These funds will be used in the development of the Innovation Career Pathways programming. Mr. Girardi is here to provide any additional information.
Thank you. As alluded to by Dr. Sawyer, and a nice segue from our high school team, work is underway with the Project Lead the Way exploration, and Mr. Riscosi did apply for a competitive grant of ten thousand dollars, the Project Lead the Way engineering grant, and it was awarded. And much like all grants, they come with a very specific purpose. They have compliance reporting requirements and accountability for use of the funds. So it is recommended that the school committee vote to accept the funds of the Project Lead the Way engineering grant for ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Nope, there being none. Thank you, Mr. Riscosi, because writing a grant is, again, above and beyond your job, so thank you for having this additional funding come in, so something that's really important. So may have a motion to accept the Project Lead the Way Engineering Fiscal Year 2024 Grant for ten thousand dollars as presented, and use, and use such funds for their intended purpose.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you again. Okay, under Finance and Operations, we're going to have an update from Mr. Girardi on the fiscal year 2024 budget.
All right, thank you. So tonight, I'll provide a high-level overview of a couple of financial areas, first with the town meeting appropriated general fund, and then in some areas to keep an eye on as the fiscal year moves forward. As a reminder, this current fiscal year, 2024, which is the 2023, 2024 school year, the town appropriated budget is eighty-three million, eighty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. If you want to know what my eyes see when I close them at night before I go to bed, it's that number, much like, you know, Ocean's Eleven above the, above the boards. So this is a 4.75% increase from fiscal '23, and we are effectively in year three of a minimum four-year override agreement between the town, select board, and yourselves. And what this caps, our overall budget increases on an annual basis. We are in the mid-part of FY '24. When I did produce this report, it was on December 22nd, which was just about 50% through the fiscal year and just over 40% through the, the school year. And in respects, respect to the expenses, the expenses are the expensive, so those were the actuals that we know of. As far as projections go, they are mid-year check and look forward to the remainder of the fiscal year. It's important to say that the look forward, it is a forecast. It's based on historical data and trends, for sure, but it certainly will change and evolve as we continue through the winter months and into the springtime. My work, our work, is to monitor and adjust to meet our goal of having a fully expended budget by June 30th, and one that has served our strategic priorities. In terms of the overall general fund, year-to-date, our actual expenditures are at thirty-two million, seventy-five thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars, and we've encumbered another forty-nine million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Not yet encumbered is four hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars, which is one-half of one percent of our overall budget. I'm projecting right now, I don't have any major concerns over, overall with the budget, and expect that we will fully expend it by June 30th. And presented to you are categories on the spreadsheet that show variances in each of the different categories, A1 through D8, and I'll go over some of them to highlight areas that we will continue to monitor through the remainder of the school year. Category A covers all staff salaries, wages and benefits, including our substitutes. We are projecting to be on pace or slightly under with administration, with Unit A, which are our teachers and our nurses, and our non-represented staff, which are our secretary's IT staff. Our variant is under budget more with our paraprofessionals, our paraprofessional group, due to personnel turnover and vacancies, and some staffing assumptions that we made for FY '24 that have not been realized yet. We are also trending 4% under on substitutes, which on paper in January looks good, but this category is one, one of the volatile ones that can turn quickly. You know, it's also not a huge number. It's about fifty-eight thousand dollars, and the 4%, you know, represents about fifty-eight thousand dollars, which does not provide a real lot of wiggle room. You know, I will say this percentage is on pace with the ebb and flow of the year, and the adjusted increases in funds in the substitute category that were made for this year, given the, the changes from last year, they're pretty accurate, and they do reflect the current trends with substitutes. We are projecting to be overall, to be over in the other wages category. This is directly tied to greater staffing costs for the summer special education program, which again is tied to the services needed to be provided for the students who attended. This was both for teachers and paraprofessionals. And we're projecting slightly over on employee benefits. This is a pretty stable category, but the overage is due to the number of teachers retiring and selling back their sick leave upon retirement. Category B is our transportation category. For regular education transportation, we're trending right on budget for, for FY '24, where we are seeing variances that are over projection is in our out-of-district transportation, including the McKinny-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. Out-of-district transportation is trending slightly higher due to higher rates for some alternative providers, where our usual, our usual provider is lacking capacity at this time. We've had to contract with some different providers this year to transport students to their educational settings outside of Shrewsbury, and the current market has driven those costs higher than anticipated. The McKinny-Vento Homeless Act reimburses transportation for homeless students at a percentage for those who, homeless students whose home is Shrewsbury, but live outside Shrewsbury, or vice versa. Funds reimbursed by the state trail until the following fiscal year, and those funds go directly to the town, though expenses are paid through the school department appropriated budget this year. We're currently running over budget in this category by just over seventy-nine thousand dollars, and we anticipate this, we will likely incur additional McKinny-Vento expenses beyond that amount through the remainder of this year, due to additional families being moved from the emergency shelter to other communities, still having Shrewsbury be the home school, and being, being eligible for transportation back to Shrewsbury for the remainder of the year. So this is a category we will keep an eye on. Category C is tuition, both special education tuition and vocational tuition. Vocational tuitions can, continue to decrease as Shrewsbury's access to Assabed declines. Voc tuitions are projecting about 5% under budget, as we have four fewer, fewer students attending than projected. Please note a change to your memo that we have forty-seven students attending Assabed. The memo does say forty-six. We also have one student attending an agricultural vocational high school. That was my mistake in the number. As of the time of this report, and like we look at every year, we look if there's any attrition out of Assabed back to Shrewsbury, at this time, we haven't had any students matriculate back into Shrewsbury Public Schools. Special education out-of-district tuitions, it's another highly volatile category that fluctuates over the course of the fiscal year. I am currently projecting an 8% variance over projected, which takes into factor actual costs and expenses and encumbrances at this time of year, and some conservative projections for the second half of the fiscal year. This category does become more solid the closer we get to the end of the school year, once we really understand who those students are and what those costs are. Again, we'll continue to monitor this, and Ms. Bartlett and Ms. Belzino, our special education administrators, will have a more accurate presentation on special education tuitions later in the spring. In relation to this is our circuit breaker account. We began this fiscal year with a fund balance of just over three point four million dollars. In setting the FY '24 budget, school committee agreed to target a 75% carryforward at the close of this fiscal year, which is two point six three million dollars. This is considered a strong reserve to achieve our financial goals and reduce budgetary risk, given the volatility of out-of-district tuition costs. We currently do not anticipate using additional circuit breaker reserve funds for balance, to balance the FY '24 budget, but it's, the strength of this reserve provides assurance that if students' needs for out-of-district placements or other expenses go beyond our current projections, those costs can be absorbed through this reserve without disrupting other pieces of the program. Finally, category D is equipment, materials, contracted services, professional development. These are mostly discretionary expenses, and are projected to be on budget and fully expensed. We will monitor these areas, pay attention to some areas of uncertainty, such as IT and cybersecurity needs. They typically don't like to line up with our FY, you know, our fiscal year. Much like curriculum, we can anticipate that. Cybersecurity doesn't wait till July to present an issue that we may need to respond to. Finally, just a brief update on ESER. Like all other school districts across the country, we have received a number of state and federal funds with respect to COVID, and the last of the bigger ESER funding sources, ESER III, is coming to a close with a spending deadline of September 30th, 2024. As a reminder, just as a reminder to our community, the district received three rounds of ESER funding, first being ESER I, amount of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, sixty dollars, that was fully expended by its deadline of September 30th, 2022. The second being ESER II, that was in the amount of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, and that was fully expended by its deadline of this past September 30th, 2023. And the last is ESER III. We received one, one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars in ESER III funds. The deadline to expense ESER III funds is September 30th, 2024, you know, about nine months from now. We currently have expensed and encumbered one million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, which is about 91% of those funds. The remaining one hundred and eight thousand dollars, they are earmarked and will be expensed by September 2024. I think this is an important message, seeing there's chatter in the news and social media that school districts are not using their COVID funding, their COVID dollars they've been awarded. I want to make the point that we've fully expensed ESER I and ESER II, and on target to expense ESER III funds in a meaningful way by the September. In closing, we will fully expand our FY '24 general fund appropriation. We will monitor all costs and update projections during the course of the year. We will continue to do this along the way, with particular attention to student needs, in particular to our out-of-district tuitions, with attention to our staffing, to transportation, and to school resources. So thank you, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I just have a question. We're hearing, you know, with Governor Haley making some, she's talking about nine C cuts, and, I mean, it's very early. We don't really know exactly. And then there was some chatter about potential grant reductions, you know, awarded grants. Have you heard anything, or do you have any concerns about any potential grants that we may have that could be reduced?
Sure. I haven't heard anything at this time, except for, we were in a meeting today with the EOHC for the homeless students, and Joe, Dr. Sawyer, asked, you know, a really pertinent question around, you know, what does this look like moving forward? And they did share some assurances that we will continue to see that funding through the end of the school year, without any assurances moving forward beyond FY '24. Up to this point, that's the, the one piece that I've heard.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
I want to thank Mr. Girardi for the work to ascertain where things are standing at this point in the, in the budget cycle. I want to also thank, in particular, Ms. Belzino and Ms. Bartlett. I know that I had asked, they, they were providing an update earlier this week on where things stand in that area in terms of out-of-district tuition, wanted to make sure we had the most updated numbers for you, where that's running over where we had expected it to be. I think that will continue, and I appreciate that Mr. Girardi's making some conservative projections for the rest of the year, but, you know, when, we always want to try to continue to educate students within their neighborhood schools and community schools with all possible, but there are times where their needs may go beyond what we can provide, and then moving into an out-of-district placement at some point during the year, if it overshoots, we're balancing that off with some savings other places right now, but ultimately, we do have that circuit breaker as a backstop if it were to be necessary. So it's a good news story. We're at a very stable position, thanks to the operational override of a few years ago. You know, we know, we were very, it was very predictable what we'd have this year. We were able to build a budget that matched that, and I think is utilizing the funds available in some, in some very high-leverage ways that are connected with our strategic priorities. So again, thank Mr. Girardi for the work, and ultimately, a very good news story. We're, we're in a stable position right now.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our minutes from our school committee workshop held on December 13th, and the school committee meeting held on December 20th, 2023. Are there any changes or corrections? Nope. They can be marked as, accepted as distributed, and we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, Purpose 7, open meeting law Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association's Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Professional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part 1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Purpose 1, open meeting law complaint where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. To have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Shubhakor?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.